Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:30 PM. I'd like to be mindful of everyone's time this evening. So I'd like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. We have one order of committee business this evening for our work session. It is the business of the Administration Committee, Bill Three of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Three, 2024, An Ordinance Mending Title Two of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Administrative Code at Chapter Two, 707, Police Retirement System, by deleting portions thereof in order to satisfy a legal resolution reached between the Capitol City Lodge Number Twelve, the Fraternal Order of Police, and the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Solicitor Grover, will you be speaking to this bill?
I will be, Madam President. In December 2021, the last meeting of the year, the Council approved a modification to the Police Pension Plan, which had gone out for an RFP, had gone through the Police Pension Board, we brought in tax council to do it. They made a number of changes to bring the plan into compliance with the IRS Code. After its adoption, the FOP voiced a concern that a provision that was worked in to satisfy a different resolution that the Council had approved for retention of managers, we added that to the pension plan provision as well. They filed an action on January 31st of 2022 in the county court challenging those two sections of the law. And we have been back and forth now with our outside counsel, their outside counsel. Ultimately, we came to the conclusion that the Pennsylvania Pension Provision for Police left open the question of who was right. And therefore, we couldn't really predict the outcome of the matter, and it did not seem worth fighting about because there's other ways to address the same problem. So the city and the FOP, through our outside counsel, stipulated to a settlement and withdrawal of the case by the FOP if we would delete two specific new subsections of the pension plan. These sections go directly to managers were authorized, or the mayor was authorized to enter into a negotiation to retain police management or to have officers step up and to be promoted into management. Because at the time of all this occurred, every manager was eligible to retire immediately. So what they did is three of the managers negotiated individual contracts on a form the Council had approved by resolution with the mayor for their own retentions. We now simply have to do a different mechanism through HR to honor those three agreements. But those three agreements are binding on the City of Harrisburg. I don't want to publicly go through the individuals because it's really personnel-related, but happy to have that discussion offline. The mechanism is still being put in place. I will say the three contracts are different from each other. What was valuable to one officer, one leader, member of leadership, something different may have been of value to a different member. So they each got to negotiate what they thought was of value for retention related to their pension and benefits. One of, you know, we will have to talk about funding them. I think that comes, some are very easy to fund because they are just, you know, another $2,000 a year towards their pension every year. And we just have to discuss with each one how they want to receive that now. Do they want to get an annuity and pay it out? Do they want to get an annual payment? How do they want to do it? But that's going to be an individual discussion for their own preferences. Some of the larger ones are the retention of things like sick and vacation leave banks, and that's a more involved discussion about how to do that. But those are the, there's only three of them on the books right now that have there. It's an open question whether other officers could enter into such an agreement with the mayor. I don't think there's been a decision yet by the mayor how she wants to handle that, at least upon my last discussion with her. But there is a resolution authorizing it from the Council. And the purpose was, frankly, to keep people who have experience so they don't leave. And when this was happening, the police pension had a one-time benefit that those individuals would have lost for them and their family if they stayed here. So this benefit was to help them financially not lose a benefit and us not to lose our entire senior management staff in the police bureau.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for providing that background. I don't have any questions. I'll defer to our Public Safety Chair to begin questioning from my colleagues, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Good evening, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:30 PM. I'd like to be mindful of everyone's time this evening. So I'd like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. We have one order of committee business this evening for our work session. It is the business of the Administration Committee, Bill Three of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Three, 2024, An Ordinance Mending Title Two of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Harrisburg, Known as the Administrative Code at Chapter Two, 707, Police Retirement System, By Deleting Portions thereof in order to satisfy a legal resolution reached between the Capitol City Lodge, Number Twelve, the Fraternal Police Order of, the Fraternal Order of Police, and the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Solicitor Grober, will you be speaking to this bill?
I will be, Madam President. In December 2021, the last meeting of the year, the Council approved a modification to the police pension plan, which had gone out for an RFP, had gone through the Police Pension Board. We brought in tax counsel to do it. They made a number of changes to bring the plan into compliance with the IRS code. After its adoption, the FOP voiced a concern that a provision that was worked in to satisfy a different resolution that the Council had approved for retention of managers, we added that to the pension plan provision as well. They filed an action on January 31st of 2022 in the county court challenging those two sections of the law. And we have been back and forth now with our outside counsel, their outside counsel. Ultimately, we came to the conclusion that their, the Pennsylvania pension provision for police left open the question of who was right. And therefore, we couldn't really predict the outcome of the matter, and it did not seem worth fighting about because there's other ways to address the same problem. So the city and the FOP, through our outside counsel, stipulated to a settlement and withdraw the case by the FOP if we would delete two specific new subsections of the pension plan. These sections go directly to, managers were authorized, or the mayor was authorized to enter into a negotiation to retain police management or to have officers step up and to be promoted into management. Because at the time of all this occurred, every manager was eligible to retire immediately. So what they did is three of the managers negotiated individual contracts on a form the Council had approved by resolution with the mayor for their own retentions. We now simply have to do a different mechanism through HR to honor those three agreements. But those three agreements are binding on the City of Harrisburg. I don't want to publicly go through the individuals because it's really personnel related, but happy to have that discussion offline. The mechanism is still being put in place. I will say the three contracts are different from each other. What was valuable to one officer, one leader, member of leadership, something different may have been of value to a different member. So they each got to negotiate what they thought was of value for retention, related to their pension and benefits. One of, you know, we will have to talk about funding them. I think that comes, some are very easy to fund because, because they are just, you know, another $2,000 a year towards their pension every year. And we just have to discuss with each one how they want to receive that now. Do they want to, do they want to get an annuity and pay it out? Do they want to get an annual, annual payment? How do they want to do it? But that's going to be an individual discussion for their own preferences. Some of the larger ones are the retention of things like sick and vacation leave banks. And that's a more involved discussion about how to, how to do that. But those are the, there's only three of them on the books right now that are there. It's an open question whether other officers could enter into such an agreement with the mayor. I don't think there's been a decision yet by the mayor how she wants to handle that, at least upon my last discussion with her. But there is a resolution authorizing it from the council. And the purpose was frankly, to keep people who have experienced, so they don't leave. And when this was happening, the police pension had a one-time benefit that those individuals would have lost for them and their family if they stayed here. So this benefit was to help them financially not lose a benefit and us not to lose our entire senior management staff in the police bureau.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for providing that background. I don't have any questions. I'll defer to our Public Safety Chair to begin questioning from my colleagues, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Good evening, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
I don't have any questions for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, so just to be clear, we're deleting section C and D. I couldn't hear.
I, I, I couldn't quite get your question. What about C and D?
Oh, I said, I just wanted to be clear that we're deleting sections C and D on page two.
Yes, of section 707.15.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, so we're going to develop a similar mechanism just outside of this process.
Yes, essentially, we're going to pay on the contracts, right? And the question, the, the contracts are, have different terms, the three of them, they're the same framework. And we just have to work through honoring the three contracts.
So will our retirement payouts obligation, we're not expecting that number to change at the end of the day?
No.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will open the floor for public comment. Not sure if anyone is present, but we'll just review. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. And Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. Is there anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. There's no further discussion. The time is 5:38 PM. Our work session stands adjourned. Oh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.
I, I talked to him about 2:15. He's, he's going to be here a little bit earlier than that, just want to try.
Time is six o'clock PM. I would like to call our special legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice President Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a time and a moment to reflect on a current situation that had happened involving a thirteen-year-old and an eighteen-year-old, where unfortunately, a life was lost, and also, we are breaking records now for something we can be proud of, but a thirteen-year-old is now out the county, potentially going to serve his life in prison, and my heart goes out to both families and citywide as we begin the process of healing and just the continuance of trying to battle gun violence and a lot of the detriments in our community. If we all could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Vice President Green?
Thank you for asking. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Next, we have Courtesy of the Floor. If you weren't present during our work session, just a few housekeeping notes, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda as printed. Next, we have Resolutions. There is one resolution this evening for consideration, Resolution Forty of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to support the two thousand and twenty-four Summer Growth Programs Environmental Team Corps and a related allocation of funds.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe we're joined by Mr. Singor Manz, Mr. Clarence Watson, if you wouldn't mind joining us? Good evening.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. If you gentlemen wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and providing a brief overview of the program, it's not new to us, but we haven't seen you in a little while, so if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and sharing, that would be helpful.
Sure, let me start, if you don't mind. I'm Singor Manz, I'm the Chief Executive Officer and President of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Our headquarters is at three five one Chestnut Street, one seven one oh one. We, I want to first thank, if you don't mind, just indulge me, I want to thank the council for being so proactive. This, as I see, is a special legislative session, and, you know, the phone calls that you all got are the same phone calls that I probably received as well, and, but I'm not the person with the power. You all are, and you acted so swiftly and so definitively on behalf of and for the benefit of the children and families of the City of Harrisburg. To be sure, this is a program, as all of you know, over the nine years, has been a staple summer program, or at least the kids between the ages of thirteen and sixteen, and saved COVID. We didn't do the COVID year. And with that program, and of course, I'm gonna let Mr. Watson speak here, but with that program, what we've now seen in the maturation of those folks, that those kids that started out with us early on, is that they've now become productive citizens for this city and abroad. And so, we now understand not just the value of the program in its immediate sense, but now, we actually have, with nine years of data and information, really the benefit that has occurred, because now almost a decade's worth of time and attention has been paid. And so, we know the benefit of these programs, and you, obviously, this council and the mayor's office, I want to thank the city and the mayor's office for being so proactive as well, we know now that this is something that we should all invest in and be a part of and support. And so, I thank you once again for being so proactive and so supportive. I really actually don't have enough words to thank you quite frankly, to make sure that this happened today.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Clarence Watson. I've been the program director for the last nine years, and when Singor gave me the call that we weren't going to do the program, I immediately called Mont Jones and talked to him about it, and he's the one person who knows the ins and outs of what we do. He's been a speaker for the last seven years. His kids have been in our program. He also had a kid as a mentor, and he went behind the scenes and did some work that would allow us to do it this year for our tenth year within the system. But I wanted to share a couple of things. I don't know if a lot of you know that what we really do, but, you know, ten years ago, you know, this teenage workforce started as a pilot program that wasn't expected to work, and ten years later, it's one of the most powerful employers for inner-city teens, probably in the state of Pennsylvania. And again, I want to thank you guys, the City Council, especially the Harrisburg Housing Authority, who's put their money where the mouth was. And we're going to have a very good year, we're going to celebrate our tenth year, and today, since the applications are going out, already, I talked to the guy down at the projects, well, down at M.W. Smith Homes. Yeah, whoa, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you scratch that word, right? M.W. Smith Homes, I called him in an hour, he said, man, we gave out twenty-five applications already. So, it's a very popular program, and our goal is to chase excellence, not money. We want to bring out the best in our kids, and our kids are so diverse, and what I want to do is leave you with one thing, I think it's on page... On page eight, I'm just going to read that to you, to let you know that what the true impact of our program is. Cortez, which is, they call him Buddha, he spent, he said, Cortez spent four years in a program because of a mentor for two years and is now a junior, well, he just graduated, from Harrisburg University, and guess how he got to Harrisburg University? During the program, he did not know that we had this opportunity in, right in our backyard. He was at another college. He said, shoot, I want to take advantage of this, and he took advantage of it and graduated last year from Harrisburg University. So, with that being said, he said, this essay below was written during his last year of the program. What I've gotten from this program for the last four years was nothing but positive, educational, and most of all, that four-letter word, love. Through these years, I've learned how to manage money, become a better team, and most importantly, be a better citizen of Harrisburg. Through the years, it's been nothing short of fun. I enjoy coming to work, which a lot of people don't. I enjoy coming to work and seeing and meeting different people. I'm definitely going to miss coming to this program every summer and learning and growing more and more each year. But I guess it's time to take a step into the real world, but thanks to this program, I am equipped with the tools and knowledge the average person doesn't have. So, I'm glad I've served our community for the past four years, and I feel ETC has made a huge impact on not only the city, but sooner than later, the world. So, Mr. Watson, keep doing what you do and continue to change lives, because this program truly changed mine. ETC for life. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to share some of the text within the resolution, just so everybody's clear on what we're doing tonight. This resolution is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to support the two thousand and twenty-four Summer Growth Programs Environmental Team Corps and a related allocation of funds. Through the program, ETC members gain summer employment that provides education on the importance of environmental issues within the community, with a focus on life and leadership skills such as responsibility and accountability, while helping to beautify the City of Harrisburg. The authority estimates the cost to run the Summer Growth Program for the summer of two thousand and twenty-four to be three hundred thousand dollars. The City Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizes the city to contribute two hundred thousand to fund the program, with the authority to bear the responsibility to fund the remaining program costs, consistent with their responsibilities outlined in an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Within the city's host fund, there exists sufficient, uncommitted, and unspent funding to underwrite this commitment to the Summer Growth Program. And I believe Ms. Marita Kelly and Mr. Brian McCutcheon are present to share the city's financial portion, if you wouldn't mind, just so everybody's clear on how that portion will go, and I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, to lead any questioning on the financial end.
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the city's finance teams for being here. If you could just go over, I believe it's Exhibit B, that's attached to this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Chair Green. Thank you, President Bowers. Mr. McCutcheon, our county manager, he's stepped in to wear a budget hat also the last couple of days, because our budget manager's been at a conference, very worthwhile conference, but nonetheless. So, thank you to Brian for taking that extra effort. He will explain the execution of the funding, and we'll take any questions. Thank you. Mr. McCutcheon?
I might have to speak up a little bit here. Good evening, everyone. Brian McCutcheon, accounting manager. I had Jared pass out a handout, it's on one page. I think you've seen that already in what's been distributed to you through the Law Bureau. President Bowers, as you mentioned, the current ask is for the two hundred thousand from the host fund, and that's what this schedule reflects, and it's a combination budget adjustment reallocation. We're in, we're through talking with the mayor and the department that oversees, that has some oversight within this fund, is comfortable with moving budget of one hundred and six thousand dollars from the miscellaneous contracted services line, and the other piece is the ninety-four thousand dollars utilizing the fund's fund balance, cash fund balance at the beginning of this year. So, the two combined moves there equate to the two hundred thousand dollars to populate the appropriate line, the grant distribution to local units in, within the host fund. And again, this pertains to the involved summer youth program that's been presented.
Thank you. I don't have many questions. I do have one, just looking at the estimated cash carryover line. It shows that we'd be moving ninety-four thousand. I think it's just a typo error, because it doesn't show it's moving, because it shows it's still ninety-four thousand available at the end.
Oh, it's a reflection of the methodology when it comes to that line. That ninety-four thousand, at the beginning of this year, when we did the budget for the host fund, there was no appropriation of fund balance, because for this particular fund. So, this ninety-four thousand, it's added there within that line, which is really, it's not a revenue, it's a source. So, the host fund is balanced for two thousand and twenty-four without the use of fund balance, but now, this ninety-four thousand is needed. So, that's why you're seeing like zero at the start.
Right.
No appropriation, but we're asking for, to appropriate the ninety-four thousand.
Okay, so it's pretty much going to move twice. It's moving into it, and then it's moving into the grant distribution line.
In a good way to look at it, in the proposed budget amendment column, the two accounts that start with a four, the four-two-nine, the four-six-two, they net to a reduction of an increase in expense of ninety-four thousand. So, what we do then is to accommodate the, to balance that. Expense is going up ninety-four, so how do we do that? We increase the source.
Right.
Fund balance, so that's what this schedule illustrates.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had about it. I'll start to my far-left Councilman. I'll start to my far left, Councilman Jones. Any questions?
No, no questions at the moment.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No, no questions currently, thank you.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Vice President Green. I just had two. My first question was, how do other youth residents get an application? I know you say you had handed some out, but is there any contact information to give if they would like an application?
Well, what we do is, we have a website where they can download the application from the website. And on the, we have a flyer that goes out to tell the people where to go get the applications at the Housing Authority locations.
Okay, would you be able to maybe email us the website? I don't know if we're allowed to share it or how that works, okay. Oh, we are, okay. So would you be able to just email it to us? And we can then share it out?
Okay.
Thank you very much. My second question, it might not be for you. I think it's an administration one. I'm guessing we're hoping to make sure we give money to this program every year, making sure it's funded. Do you know if that's been a conversation? Just so this doesn't have to be, come up again as an issue.
Interestingly, that you're asking this. This has been a program in the past.
Right.
And budgeted through the city, through the host fund.
Correct.
I think COVID kind of threw things a little helter-skelter, so to speak. But now, if that's the desire of, well, Sasha Green manages this account, but you're her City Council member.
Actually, the housing does, when I checked, it wasn't with me anymore after the reorganization. Because I actually asked Ms. Ross, and then it went to Harrisburg Housing Authority. And they said it wasn't under me anymore, but I'm not.
From a City of Harrisburg perspective, it would be.
Okay. Sorry, I was told it wasn't, so I'll correct that then.
Yeah, so we'll just work with Ms. Ross to...
Make sure it's in her budget.
Make sure that it's a programmatic effort in the budget, the mayor's budget when she presents it. So we'll make her know that that is to be added to the host fund as a project.
Okay.
So, if I may, speaking with the mayor, this is a discussion that her and I had that I would be asking the same question, can this be funded? And this is something that she's willing to do moving forward. So I think it will come down to the budget and make sure it's there. So I just wanted to let my colleague know that this is something that we're going to continue to support.
And the nice thing is that historically, the past has been funded here. So it's not brand new to our team. So we're happy to accommodate and work with this finance team.
Thank you for answering. I just wanted to make sure, I know it had been funded in the past, just making sure moving forward. I know COVID stopped a lot of things, but not allowing this to stop, you know? So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Bowers. Any questions on the Schedule B?
No, thank you, I don't have any questions.
And Councilman Davis, any questions on Schedule B?
No questions.
Councilman Daniels, any questions?
Yes, just quickly for my edification. How many students this summer?
Yeah, about a hundred, we're at about a hundred.
A hundred?
Yeah, about a hundred. We have fifteen mentors.
Okay, and will this be a truncated program since we're starting in June? Or you guys set this start right away?
Oh, no, we're starting to set at the normal time. The kids normally start, we have orientations on July tenth and eleventh, and the kids actually start on July fifteenth.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's it for me.
Councilwoman Daniels, so the program historically, with the exception of the first year, is a six-week program. I think it was the first year only, right, where it's four weeks. And then beyond that, it's six weeks. And we thought it was important that this year be no different. So it'll be six weeks as well. The goal is to have a start date that essentially runs through the six-week period that ends just before school starts. So we keep the kids active and keep their attention up until school starts for obvious reasons.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions on the final. I'm just over talking. Any more questions, Councilman Daniels?
No, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you. And back to you, President Bowers.
Thank you. I did want to note that after the conclusion of the program, the authority shall deliver to the mayor and city council a written post-program report accounting for program activities and expenditures on or before September first of Two Thousand and Twenty Four. And in the past, we've had very spirited presentations with videos and music, and the students have come, alumni of the program have come. So we're expecting something great this year, too.
That's why I'm smiling. That's a given, we're going to put on a show.
Okay.
September first, though, because we usually have our banquet when... We should be okay.
Okay, well, we can coordinate. We'll be flexible in that. But as long as we have some level of report of how the program fared this year. I don't know if any other council members have any other questions. The one I had regarding the timeline of the program was asked and answered. And then you're going to email us either the flyer or the website link. That way we can share and promote. Oh, one question, with the applications, what is the deadline for the applications? July first, okay. Councilman Jones, did you have?
Yeah, just more of a comment to you gentlemen. You know, as you said, Mr. Watson, I've spent several years in the program, speaking and working with the youth. However, I just appreciate this a lot, what you guys do and how it's grown. There were some other people involved as well, from my understanding, like Ms. Rafika Muhammad, other people like that that were involved in growing this out. But I commend you on providing this. This was very important, not only to myself, but I'm sure to my colleagues as well because, as we know, there are so many things going wrong in the City of Harrisburg with our youth. So to remove something like this would be vital. You know, it's vital to keep it in place, I'm sorry, you know? But the work that you guys do, I enjoy watching the program. And even to your point, Mr. Mans, when I see some of the youth in the community, all I see is those green shirts, right? They never know, Mr. Watson, I tell you, never know who's watching. And I'll see them somewhere, and I'll say, what's the seven habits? And they can, you know, get it out pretty, it's pretty well versed. So I like some of the curricula, a lot of the curricula that you guys have. So this is a very powerful program, and we look forward to continuing to support this. So I just wanted to take that time and say thank you for the work that you guys are doing. That's it.
Thank you. We know the benefit of the program. We've seen it through both the alumni that have been present and the students that participated annually prior to COVID. So we're hoping we can bounce back even better. And not only are the teens and young adults learning about environmental stewardship within the city that they call home, right? But leadership skills, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, that's one of my favorite books as an adult. So I've taken heed to some of those principles and practices. And so I imagine how transformative it could be for our teens. I will entertain a motion to return to our legislative session if there is no further discussion.
I'd like to take a moment to also, thank you, President Bowers, just touch on the curriculum. As a nurse, I really, really appreciate the health aspect of the program, teaching the youth the importance of eating healthy foods. I mean, we are what we eat. And the food that we eat is going to feed our brains and help us to think better. And so I was just getting excited after listening to President Bowers. Just wanted to say something. Thank you for everything you're doing. And one other question, is this program for the Housing Authority youth that live in the Housing Authority primarily only? Or is it for the entire city? Oh, both? Oh, okay. I wasn't sure, thank you.
So I would say, on average, probably about forty percent of the program participants, teens, are from the Housing Authority. The other sixty percent are in housing. So it's a combination.
Combination, great.
It was all housing the first year, and then it got popular.
Yes, I was reading, and it kind of led me to ask the question. I wasn't sure, so yes, that's even better, thank you.
Didn't change our intensity for the program.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to return to the legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have before us Resolution Forty of Two Thousand and Twenty Four. Mr. Truesdale, could you read it back into the record one more time, please?
Resolution Forty, Two Thousand and Twenty Four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to support the Two Thousand and Twenty Four Summer Growth Programs, Environmental Team Corp., and a related allocation of funds.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Consistent with the Sunshine Act, because we're doing this out of order, it's important to provide public comment before a vote in the council.
Yes, I was getting ready to offer that opportunity. Thank you for the reminder. We will offer public comment regarding Resolution Forty of Two Thousand and Twenty Four at this time. Same rules apply. If you have a comment you'd like to share, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Well, take your shoes off and then go upstairs.
Uh-oh. Okay. Anyone to my right? Seeing and hearing none, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing none, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing none, we can resume. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Forty of Two Thousand and Twenty Four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Here, yes, sorry.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Forty, Two Thousand and Twenty Four passes by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to old business. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? No, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
I just want, oh, one.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Y O P C celebration tomorrow at City Island for, we're celebrating Juneteenth, and there will be a Jubilee at City Island from twelve to five, twelve to five P M. There will be games for kids. There will be free water golfing, I believe it was also. So a Kids' Corner and everything, so a lot of stuff going on tomorrow. So please come celebrate with everybody, Juneteenth Jubilee, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Yes. Just again, I want to remind everybody else, this Thursday, twelve to four P M, Harrisburg University. And if you would look in the Berg, I think the Berg just printed it about the Gun Violence Symposium that's being held, also made it available for people to stream it through YouTube. So if you go to the Berg magazine, there is a link provided there so you can watch it if you can attend. So that's it.
Thank you. If there's no further business for discussion, the time is six thirty P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.